Okay, good evening. Linda, could you please give the invocation?
Spare heads, please. Dear Holy and Righteous Father, we welcome you and Holy Spirit here as the affairs of this city are discussed. We declare that no weapon formed against this council shall prosper, and all who rise up in judgment against them shall be shown to be in the wrong. We cancel the effects of all words spoken in slander and gossip, and cancel the effects of negative media regarding this council and issues that are discussed here. We bless our aldermen and our alderwomen and the leaders of this city to make wise decisions based on knowledge, understanding, and revelation. Bring a oneness by your spirit, that oneness that allows no other agenda but your agenda, Lord, for this city. The council and leaders make plans, but it is you who directs our paths. Let each member hear that voice that says, "This is the way; walk ye in it." And, Lord, we extend comfort to the family of the gentleman who lost his life this past weekend, and we pray for healing for those that were injured. We cry out for justice, a stop to senseless loss of lives, and we cry out for safety in our street. Lord, give strategies to all assigned to keep order and send your angelic host to assist us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Linda. So now we will officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Present in person, Alderperson Clem.
Here.
Monroe.
Here.
Simmons will be marked absent for the time being. Parker.
Here.
Stacy.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Sanders.
Here.
And Sellers. We have a quorum, madam.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion to allow Alderman Simmons to attend remotely.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Parker. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Parker.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yes.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And Monroe.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero, and Alderperson Simmons will be marked present at 6:05.
Thank you. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Parker?
The Pledge of Allegiance, two to five, of the United States of America, in two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders. Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
And Simmons.
Aye.
The agenda is approved eight to zero.
Item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on September 5th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
And Simmons.
Aye.
The minutes are approved, eight to zero.
Could we check the date on that?
It's got today's date.
I believe it was August 21st. Thank you.
Good catch on the typo. Thank you.
Good catch.
Next is public comments. We have one received by email.
Actually, that was requested to be read at the end of the meeting, if that's okay?
It is related. It's half-related.
It's on an agenda item, though?
Half is related, half is not.
So half of it is agenda-related, half of it is non-agenda, so I would...
The person who sent it, oh, pardon me, comments to the end of the meeting.
I would read the...
Go ahead and...
The half that is agenda-related, because that's the public comment now, is for agenda-related items. The non-agenda-related item can be read at the end of the meeting during the non-agenda-related public comment.
So the second part of the email from Shane Orlo reads, "Second, the Republican Party put out an absolutely offensive and false message to the people today that claim the Democrat City Council members are behind the home rule sales tax increase. This is an outright lie that is being spread to the people. Not one Democratic Alderperson has proposed this, nor have they supported this. It was proposed by City Manager Rob Boyer and is consistently supported by the Republican City Council Alderpersons. We can pretend that there are no political parties on our city council, but let's be honest. The only people that want home rule and the only people that want the tax increase are the Republican representatives that have already had their streets paved. The Democratic representatives have opposed it completely. I would hope that the Republican City Council members would tell whoever put out this smear campaign to quit lying to the people. We aren't stupid."
And then we have Diane Yocum.
First of all, I'm speaking against the 1% increase because there are too many people in our community who are not able to afford this, and there are many of the marginalized, there are many of the poor, there are many of the senior members of our community who live on very fixed incomes and cannot afford extra dollars going out of their pocketbook for this kind of tax increase with the hopes that other people will be coming to our city to cover this. I already know, as many have said before, many people who go out of town in order to buy gas, buy groceries, whatever, because to get away from shopping, to get away from the tax increases that we have here. Secondly, is in relation to what you also just heard. I am appalled and I am outraged at this kind of crap, this kind of abusive, lying messaging that goes out either by white nationalists, either by racists in this community, or either by anyone who is behind this that is not being reined in. And if it's a Republican, you need to do due diligence about this, because this is absolutely appalling. And I, as a white person, am very outraged that my black brother and sisters have to sit through this kind of disrespect that is put out by liars in this community, mainly trying to create division and hate. You talk about slander? Here it is. And you threaten people's lives with this kind of behavior, whoever... And if you and anyone sitting in this room or even remotely smugly thinking it's okay, or if you try to talk around it, or if you try to minimize it, this is literally Jim Crow II. And if you don't know what Jim Crow laws are, if you don't know what Jim Crow actions are, then you need to have some education. Because this cannot stand. And yes, it's related to tonight's agenda, but more so, it's relating to persons' lives, and it's appalling behavior, no matter where it came from, and for those who are not shutting it down, if you happen to know who's behind it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wallen Bolin.
Thank you, Diane.
I'm William Bolin. I'm a resident of Freeport. Moved here in 1989 after I got out of the service. I was born and raised here. I received that same text message, and I received another one. I called my councilwoman today. She told me to come down. I am opposed to this 1% tax increase. My wife and I live on Social Security, and Social Security alone, it's a good thing I have my house and car paid off. I am opposed to this, and 8% is pretty high, if you ask me already. And when I go up to Monroe and see it's only 5%, I guarantee you, I might be living on Social Security, but if you, first time I see 9% tax on my receipt, I will stop shopping local first. I will take all my business out of town as much as possible. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lynette Williams?
My name's Lynette Williams. I live on Arapahoe Drive. I want to talk about the sales tax increase. I probably have a different perspective than what you've just heard. Taxes. It's said that you can never escape these or death. I want to address the sales tax increase proposal. As I pondered this message to the council, it reminded me of so many times in our lives when we place before us the pro and the con chart. I've lived in Freeport 50 years, so even though I'm not born and bred here, I did choose to live here. In the '70s, and the '80s, and the '90s, the councils kept taxes low and apparently didn't fix a thing, the gravy years. We had Economy, Cremont Forester, Bankers Life, Newell, and Kelly Springfield. And of course, we can't forget the businesses that are now keeping us going these days, both the schools, the public and educational schools, FHN. People worked, lived, and shopped in our community, but capital improvements were not done. Well, we're paying for this now. The new council members won their campaigns on listening to their constituents. The roads east of Route 26 are a big issue, and in very blunt words, crap in a lot of areas. But we can't get the improvements we need without a funding source, especially one we can control the use on. The reliance on state and federal funding for our capital improvements is depressing and at times gets us nowhere. Our ancestors relied on themselves for getting the job done. They gathered together and created the country in which we live to make it better for themselves. Our constant reliance on waiting on someone's schedule to get the job done creates anger, resentment, and does no good. The council can control these funds. I know taxes will be the death of all of us, but you can't have road improvements without a funding source the council controls, and one in which we, the citizens of Freeport, can give direction and election to you, the council. Creating a permanent, dedicated source of funding for roads will be doing a service to Freeport. The permanent tax is an equitable source of funding for this community. My understanding of the tax is, as it will be implemented, on eating and drinking outside your home. The tax will not be on prescription drugs. The tax will be spread through the community and those that visit us. Now, let's talk about the amount. Maybe 1% is too high. It would get the funds quicker and possibly get the work done, if we can find workers, but that's a separate issue. But maybe a compromise could be reached, possibly half a percent instead, or possibly to be revisited annually, or to have a sunset clause, per my discussion with Mr. Monroe. The decision ultimately... It is?
It is. If you want to continue at the end of the meeting, you're welcome to, but right now, your three minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you.
And that concludes public comments. So we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and acted as one motion unless there's a member of the council who'd like to have something removed for further discussion. Seeing none, would the consent agenda consist of approving, to receive and place on file, the board and commission minutes from the Firefighters Pension Fund Board of Trustees, April 27th, and the Police Department report for July 2023? Approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $873,359.04, and the approval of payroll from the pay period ending August 26, 2023, in the total of $587,132.65, and the finance report and the cash and investment reports for July 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
And Simmons.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number five is recognition of service awards. Police chief?
We have three service awards this month. Two of them couldn't be here tonight. The first one is Carla Green. She's our head records clerk. She has 25 years with the city. The first 15 was with the library, the last 10 with the police department. And Corporal Dan Stott, he couldn't be here as well. He's been with the police department for 10 years, so I appreciate all the hard work that they do. Present with us tonight is Detective Ginn. Will you come up here? So Detective Claire Ginn has been with the police department for five years. Prior to employment with the PD, she was a member of our auxiliary police unit. Detective Ginn has been assigned to the special victim unit for three years now. As the only detective assigned to the SVU, Detective Ginn's caseload consists of following up on all the domestic violence cases that are reported to the police department. Detective Ginn also investigates sex crimes and often attends victim-sensitive interviews for cases involving child victims. When major incidents occur, Detective Ginn assists general case detectives with their investigations, and it's safe to say that Detective Ginn manages the most extensive caseload at the police department. Detective Ginn is an asset to the police department, and her hard work plays a major role in accomplishing our mission. So thank you for your service. Here's your five-year award.
Thank you. Congratulations. Fire Department.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to invite Chad Coonard up to the podium here. Did your family just step in? I have to talk really slowly. They just went to the washroom here. So it's my pleasure to introduce Chad Coonard and recognize him for his five years of service today. Chad started his employment with the fire department on September 17 of 2018. He presently holds a bachelor's degree in business administration. He's one of our top paramedics in the department here. He also serves as a paramedic preceptor, training other new paramedics as they come out of school. So he also holds a position of basic operations firefighter. They're back. Certified fire service vehicle operator, has his materials, operations, and technical level. He's a member of the Mavis Division 17 Hazmat Response Team, so when called upon, he can respond anywhere within the county. So some of his other accomplishments within the organization, he's a member of our foreign fire insurance board, and he's married to his wife Becky, and they have three children. So in recognizing your five years of employment today, we'd like to offer this certificate to you. And then here's some downtown dollars for your family.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
I always like to have our members have an opportunity to speak to the council and address the crowd. Tonight, all right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We will move on to item number six, which is the first reading of ordinance 202340. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving 1% increase in the home rule sales tax.
Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last, we spoke about this at the last council meeting, and also the previous committee, the whole staff is bringing forth a proposal for a 1% sales tax to provide necessary funding for road reconstruction and road paving projects. The anticipated uses for these funds are paving materials, manpower, curb gutter, ADA ramps, contract paving work. And staff has added a couple additional items. One is also for use in wages of road crews, and also the use of the funds for potential larger projects that might span a couple of years, so also to pay for any kind of financing of larger projects that span more than one year. So with that, I'd like to open up the floor for conversation.
Well, actually, I think we first need to have a motion to move this ordinance forward, and then we can have discussion.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Shadle. So now, if we have questions, debate?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Alderman Clem?
Hello, Mayor. If I could, there's been a lot of good discussion brought forward, people for this project, people against this project. And it's good to have all the discussion we're having, and we need to have a lot more. A couple things. I had a conversation last week with Cece at some length about some of the things that go into this, and I'm not necessarily speaking for Cece, but also there are concerns among everyone of just how this fund, where this funding comes from, how it's controlled, what it looks like, what's the flow of how it goes into a fund, and do we know that's the only thing in that fund? And that's the only thing it'll be used for with roads. It seems that we have conversation, and the city manager and I have had some conversations about kind of some what-ifs and that kind of stuff, like what if a person from this union is working in this part of it and isn't included in this particular line of people coming in? Is that kind of like what we talked about?
Yes, but I'd like to put a finer point on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
In consultation with Finance Director, I think we've got that hurdle kind of solved internally using the utility funds. So I think we're okay there in terms of, you know, how the funds would be apportioned with our labor force. So I think we can say that we can use it for strictly road, for funding for roads.
Account, Richter and I talked, Finance Director Richter and I talked. Could you kind of give us, Michelle, like we talked, kind of a once-over, how we can track the CIP funds and like this 1% sales tax? One other thing I think we need a paper on, and we got one tonight, but I think we need a paper, as was discussed by one of the people that talked to, just exactly where that 1% goes. As we know, it doesn't go on new cars. It doesn't go on medications. You know, there's certain things that it does not go on, that people have in mind that they think it just goes on everything, and it doesn't. But, Michelle, could you kind of explain a little bit of what we talked about and how the funds flow down, so we know?
So accounting-wise, the state of Illinois gives us our portion of home rule sales tax monthly, and they will give one deposit a month, and that will include, if you decide to vote for the 2.25, it's just, they're not going to split it for us. They're not going to give us a deposit of 1% and a deposit of 1.25. We'll do that mathematically. We'll just take the percent, 1% of 2.25. And that road portion that comes from the state of Illinois, that if you go with 1%, the city already has a fund for roads, a accounting fund. You hear us talk about several different funds all the time. This fund was developed with our first bond issuance back in 2019 for road projects. So that's where I would suggest these funds go. The use of the funds, as you've outlined in the ordinance, we've done some thinking as far as how can we account for it's just being used for roads when you're talking about personnel. So we have, I've discussed with the street department on when they're doing street projects with our own personnel, we can come up with how much that costs us in personnel and labor, how much that is. And that's how much will be covered by the road funds. And then any special projects that are approved, I assume by council through the budgeting process, will come out of that fund as well as contractors, hot mix, all of that kind of things that are related in this ordinance. Does that touch on the actual accounting part of keeping it there?
Sure. Could I do follow-on?
Sure.
We also talked about, there's, everybody has questions in the amount of money and how it's used in the original CIP fund that was put in a number of years ago, okay? And can you kind of explain each one of those taxes? These are the taxes that show up on the water bill. So this is primarily used for nothing but infrastructure, but then allowed to be put into roads because we had money for infrastructure but no money for the roads to fix them. But could you kind of give me a little idea on how that's tracked and where it goes and stuff?
Sure. So right now, we maintain a CIP bank account, which is, for example, in the consent agenda tonight, I did a report on July, that bank account is listed on the consent agenda of how much money is in there, of CIP funds. That would be the $39 that is on the water bill. On the water bill, it's broken up a little bit, you know, the $4 or $2 for roads? It's all broken up on the water bill. But fortunately, our software that we purchased three years ago, our Tyler software, financial software, all of that is coded to, you know, if it's water CIP, it's accounted for in water. If it's sewer, it goes to sewer. So at the end, we collect the funds through the water bill every month, and I actually make a bank transfer of all those CIP dollars that were actually collected, not billed, but were collected. The funds were collected. We move the cash for that to the CIP bank account. And then as the month goes on, we have CIP expenses. So we have Adams Avenue rolling in. We have the water, the new Burchard Water Plant, the expenses that we're paying the contractors for those. The city will pay those bills and then be reimbursed out of the CIP fund for those large expenses. The other thing that does come out of the CIP funds is our payments to the IEPA for some of the loans that we're getting, that are already in repayment. So it is a lot of tracking, but I can give you, you know, documentation of what bills have gone through there and how they have, you know, that's my job. So that's kind of how the CIP works. As far as the money that's on the water bill for roads, it's very small. It's, I can't remember if it's $2 or $4. So those funds are put into this road fund that I have talked about. Every month, the software is able to move the collections right into that road fund. But those were not really meant to fix the road. Those funds were meant to pay the debt service on the two bond issuances that we have had in 2019 and 2021, I think. Because that's not a lot of money. That's only like $240,000 on your water bill that comes through. That's really just paying interest on those two bond issuances.
Michelle, the last thing you touched on right before then is probably one of the most important that we talked about in the CIP fund at the end. One of the major things of this is you have to pay the bills up front to all the contractors and everything, and all of those have to be paid for before we get a nickel from the state of Illinois. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So keep in mind, it might look like there's shuffling going on here to there, but there is a pretty good accounting, and I've had the fortune to... is a pretty good accounting, and I've had the fortune of working with Michelle for years, and she's done an absolutely fantastic job, and, and I applaud her for what she's done. That's why we had this conversation about a week ago. So we could look and see of what we need to do, if there's anything we need to put in place to make sure this all goes into, into roads, period. One of the other questions I asked for was the fact of, what is Rockford's? And Rockford's was done differently. Rockford's was done on a referendum, okay? But I believe that referendum, Rod, Rob, tell me if I'm wrong, is based upon a five-year plan of theirs?
Yes, that's correct. They work on a five-year plan. It's going to be evolving, though, every year. It's going to have to evolve to some extent, but yes.
So I guess, you know, I'm comfortable with that part of it, but if anybody's got anything that they're looking for, additional or something that we're really missing in this, the important thing from I hear, that I hear from constituents, other than constituents that say, I don't believe we should pay more taxes, so on and so forth, please believe me, I agree, the only source that we have to get money for roads are two. This would be one, the second would be raise your real estate taxes. Raise your real estate taxes, everybody, you pay for that, it keeps going up. It's a bad deal, they're too high already, but also keep in mind, one of the things people forget, there's many people go to Freeport, go from Freeport to Monroe, I will vouch for that 100%. And if they can justify the amount of money they're spending for gas and wear and tear in my car, on their car, God bless them, okay? We aren't going to change that. But there's people that come from Monroe, there's people that come from all over, that come to the city of Freeport and pay taxes that have nothing to do with Freeport. So some of these taxes will be paid by people from out of town rather than everybody in town paying.
Do we know that the percentage guess of how many dollars are, would come in from outside sources, other than people that live in Freeport? Was it like 30% of that? Do we have a guess on that?
I, I don't.
No, I, you know, I thought of that today, and I thought, you know, if somebody came up that number, with a number to me, don't get me wrong when I say this, I'd think it would be hokey.
There's got to be a statistic of what we have now.
There is a certain amount of money that's spent from outside, but it's real easy to track in hotel motel tax, that kind of stuff, but it's very hard to tell in purchases, straight out purchases that somebody buys.
Alderman Sanders, you had your hand up?
Hi, everybody. The discussion is open for this particular ordinance on sales taxes, and I have, I don't have complete clarity on how we, how the genesis of all of this got started. I didn't hear how it was supposed to be discussed, first of all. I wondered if the council had a chance to consider this particular part of the discussion of, of a sales tax. Where did it originate? I always have to say that, for whatever reason. Where did this thing just come out of, out of the sky to impose sale taxes? Who is the one that brought up the subject and initiated this whole process that we're talking about, that we have in a conversation with? Because none of this is clear to me on how we got to this point, and has not been discussed it, but we're moving as if though we have discussed it, this up, sales tax agenda. It is, we're acting like we already had this in the mix already, which it had not been. And I'm, and I'd like to know who are the people that is trying to implement this program and brought it up, initiated it, and tried to tell us how it's supposed to go. The council has not have a, what I want to say is, yeah, the council has not adjourned from something like this, from a council meeting. We had not even adjourned anything like this. But the point that I'm making is, it was not even initiated in our agenda to bring this procedure process to the council, so we can have a discussion with clarity. We don't, the council has not got together to discuss any of these matters. We need to back up. This is why the people in this city is irate about this proposal so soon, this 1%. I mean, we did not do an analytical job to analyze where the fundings and resources are coming from. We're just hearing it from a few people. We as a, we as a council need to know how we got to this point, why we at this stage, and why are we considering it with all the, all of the financial proposals or topics and things of that nature? We're just having a conversation about something that we're potentially trying to get through, through the council. How could you get something through the council when we have not even had a time to discuss it? We in the council, yeah, we in the cow right now at this meeting, but it takes another, it takes meetings before we put this in the agenda. And the people are wondering, why are we doing such things so immediately, immediately and so fast? I mean, we have to understand that people are not dumb, they're not ignorant, but they can see where the, their sales taxes is coming in at, because some on this council is down for it and want to push this thing through. We got to pull the reins on this horse and, and slow it down so people can understand the real purpose of this, of this sales taxing, and how it's being appropriated, and why we don't have the resources to accommodate our road conditions and things of this nature. I hear about, I, I heard, I heard someone says, moving money to a CIP funding. I don't even know what that means yet. I had not heard about what the acronyms of that, that, those initials were for. And so I can't define it, I don't know what it's about, I don't know how monies are moving, but the thing about it is, the people of this city is not ignorant, they're just knowing that this has happened on many occasions about sale taxes and things like that. Why aren't we having such a thing as a referendum on this matter? Why aren't we having closed session meetings to find out how we got from point A, now we move it on to point B? And I, and I don't, I just don't feel comfortable with that. I know my constituents are not feeling comfortable with it as well, especially when we had that water discussion and how we was going to fund that particular project. Those things is not clear totally to the public. I think we need to have an update on a lot of projects that we are considering or putting in motion. I think there's projects that we need to keep revised in our mind and bringing us up to date. I, I want, I want our city manager to make sure that when we go into these discussions, we need a precursor before we start the process of discussing something of this magnitude. So we need that, you know? And, and, and I'm not satisfied, and I'm not happy with this. Somebody needs to tell me, how did this come up?
Okay, can I tell you?
Okay.
Would that be all right? Okay, and I'm not sure what you meant as far as closed session meetings, because everything we talk about, this last few meetings, we've been talking about this. So, so let's ask ourselves, what is the number one complaint that we hear from everybody, whether they're coming in from out of town or whether they live here? The number one complaint is always roads. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
Okay. So another thing that we hear a lot of is that we need to pay our employees better, which I think that's not a bad idea either. So we have to come up with a solution. How do we fix our roads? How do I pay, how do we pay our employees better? So, so we have to have a solution. And so the job of the staff is to listen to what goes on in council meetings, and they hear that there's constant talk of roads and wages. So it's their job to figure out what's the best solution.
No, it's, no, Mayor, I have to stop you there.
No, actually, I have the floor.
It is our job.
I have the floor.
Okay.
And so, no, the day-to-day job for our staff is to handle those day-to-day things and then come back to us with what the best solution is, and then the council decides, is that the best solution? If not, then let's talk about what is, what do you think the best solution is? So that's, that's where those things come from. So you know what? As we're talking about budget things, we can live within our budget of, of maintaining our roads with our MFT, which is going to be extremely small, and we will not get big projects done. We will not have the funding to be able to do Walnut next year and all these different things that we want to do. It just won't happen with, without that funding source. So we have to come up with, what does that look like? Because our roads are going to deteriorate faster than our MFT funding. We know that, because that's what's happened over the last several years. So we have to have a different source. So we have to figure it out. And so if you think about, about, you know, everybody says that they spend their money outside, get gas someplace else, shop someplace else, you have to understand how detrimental that is to any community. Because if you get your gas in Monroe, all that tax money is going to Monroe, to the state of Wisconsin. It's not coming here. So if you put your gas here and you spend a couple cents more here, it comes here. Same as getting your groceries here or get, buying at Marshalls, you know? We're talking about 1%, which I don't want to pay more tax money. I don't, I don't want that either, but we have to figure out what the solution is. So let's just pretend you go to, to Marshalls and spend $200 at Marshalls, that would mean that $2 is going to go towards roads. So if you think about that versus going like to Wisconsin or to Lena or someplace else, you're, what you spend in Freeport in tax stays in Freeport.
Okay, okay. But the thing is, that I find, is that all that you just talked about, the council has not had the opportunity to listen to that side of the story. We have not been able to figure out and given a, a good analogy on what should be done, or we have not had any input on what should be done. This is a disservice to this council. And so if we don't have an opportunity to voice our opinion, who's voicing it for us if we're not operating in the capacity of our position? So if that is not happening, should nothing be crossing no path, talking about other projects and talking about moving appropriate money, appropriating monies elsewhere, opening up projects? I, I explained to my brother, Rob, we need to put a cap on all projects. We can't have 20, 30 projects moving and trying to move money to accommodate all of that. We cannot do that. I, I'm saying, we can, we have to put a cap on spending. This is, you just can't keep opening up projects and taking funds and don't know where the source of the funds are coming from. And, and that is what we're talking, we have not had that, that discussion yet. The council needs to get together with, with the, with their own meeting and devise what it is that we can agree upon if it becomes a topic, if it becomes a subject. That's what we should be doing. But those opportunities has evaded us in not giving us the opportunity to insert our own opinions and then vote for it or, or vote not for it, you know? That's my point. And so we need to back up. That's my, and we don't have to rush through this. This is not something that is detriment to our, to our city. We've been doing without it for the last 20 years. Road, road habilitation, we have, we have not had that within the last, last 20 years that I know of, road condition has been poor since, since even then.
Well, if you have a solution to something, we want to hear it.
We did not have an opportunity to come up with a solution, is what I'm getting at. We have to have that as a collective, as a collective council body. We have not had that. There's no minutes of the meetings of such a thing. And that's the reason why I'm, I'm, I'm being debatable and argumentative about why we're trying to rush this pro, this program through and then cripple the citizens of Freeport, impeding up on their little finances that they get, and then, and they don't have no, they don't have much money to work from dated, I mean, to live on for day-to-day or month to month, year to year. We have been imposing all kinds of financial penalty, penalties, I'm going to call it penalties, against the people of this, of this city, because they can, they can come up and speak, but how much do we listen to them? How, 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 how much do we care about what they think? That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. And so as a, as a resident of this city, I feel, I sympathize with a lot of people who are going through this, this hardship. People are going through a hardship time, and we're sitting up here making motions to implement new projects, sale taxes, moving money from one project to the next project. This is what we're doing. This is all I hear. The rhetoric that I hear is not conducive to the city residents of this city. And so I don't, until we can get together to devise a source, look at what we got available, and then move on. I don't want to see just certain individuals sitting on this council trying to indicate what it is that we should be going for, and then try to push a motion for it and, and try to get a vote on it. That's not how that's done. We need to know the genesis of how we got there and who proposed it. First of all, who proposed home rule, sales taxes, and how does that get triggered? Who triggers that?
Well, that's a, that's a vote. That went to, that went to a vote last October or last November.
November, yeah.
And it passed for home rule, so that is, that is a right that the council has, and I-
Yeah, the council has.
Yes.
Yeah, but the council-
And you are elected on behalf of your citizens to be their voice.
But the thing is, the thing is, we are not part of what the home rule had just done. We had no voice in that. It's just like you're trying to skate it by the council without a discussion. That's my whole point. And the point that, that needs to be mentioned is that this council is not about a few people, it's a whole council. And, and so the thing that I'm finding out, and I listen very closely, is that only certain people are implementing or suggesting or discussing things that has not even met the council yet, the whole, the council as a whole. And I'm, I'm sitting here listening to everybody talk about what we should be doing, this, that, and the other. Imposing a 1% sales tax on people is not good enough if we have not had our own, we have not spoke for the residents of this city.
Alderman, Stacy?
If we have not done that, then, then we need to pull the reins on those horses.
Alderman Sanders, you asked a great question, but you're not allowing it to be answered. So I'm going to take it back. Where did this 1% originate from?
Did you want me to say it again?
No, I'm talking about this 1% increase. I'm not talking about home rule. I'm talking about who thought it up? Who had this ideal or this dream or this thought?
I can answer that again.
So are you saying you did?
No. I didn't say that. Alderman Shadle, did you?
Could I, please? The number one issue that has been brought at me since I was campaigning before I was elected and since I've been elected, and to this day, is our roads. The streets are terrible, what are we going to do? I have spent two years thinking this through. How can we fix our roads? How can we come up with money? I have had numerous conversations with then-manager Bukas, Darren Stieckel, manager Boyer, countless citizens, friends, family. I came up with this idea, along with in conversation several others. This is something that, as you're trying to solve a problem, the answer comes to the top. 1% sales tax affects everybody that travels these roads, that stops to buy an iced tea or buy their groceries if they're from town, if they're not from town. It, in the discussions I've had and my thought process, this is, in fact, the most equitable way to fund- way to fund the roads. Our number one question from our constituents is, what are you gonna do about the roads? This is what we're gonna do about the roads. We have to pay for them somehow.
Alderman Stacey.
Okay. The first time I heard about this 1% was in June, and City Manager Boyer, it was in your office. And it was spoken about wanting to give the city workers a pay raise. We wouldn't even give them an extra vacation day. So, do you think, I think that we're really concerned about giving them a raise? When it was mentioned the other week about the 150 mil, and in that account, now there's, I believe it was said 13 mil, the remain of the 150. Is that 13 mil gonna be put in a road account? Is that 13 mil gonna be put where it can be used for what it was borrowed for? Or what? That 13 million needs to be in that account for our roads.
Manager Boyer, can you, can you shed some light on what she's asking?
Yes. The, uh, the money will be spent on materials, it'll be spent on contract labor, domestic labor, ADA ramps, scub, gutter, curb, and all those things related to roads, including utilities that need to be replaced under the roads. So, that's what it'll be used for. That's how it's written in the ordinance.
I'm talking about the 13 million that already exists, that should be.
Uh, Director Richter.
The 13 million is designated for water, sewer, and storm, and that $2 for roads. But it's water, sewer, and storm is where that money is restricted to stay. So, I can't use it for roads.
But it's for roads, you just said.
No, just that $2 that goes into the roads to pay for the debt service. So, that 13 million is to pay for the water plant, the wastewater plant, the, the phase one, sewer projects, storm sewer projects, not building roads.
But you said that-
I'm sorry?
You said that, um, we're paying bonds with that money.
So, two years through, we, the city has taken out two loans, two bond issuances. And those funds have already been committed and being finally spent, you know, being spent this year. They're each around $2 million apiece. So, we've spent those funds on the road projects over the last four years.
However, when that money was borrowed, were the people told that's what it was for? Or were they told for something else?
It wasn't borrowed. Pardon me, it wasn't borrowed. Let's get it straight.
It is a, it's a bond issuance for the purpose of roads, and that was disclosed.
So, how do we get ahead if we keep robbing Peter to pay Paul? How do we get ahead?
Alderman Stacey, um, what Director Richter is saying is the funding from the water bill that goes into the segregated account for roads, goes to pay for the principal and interest on bonds that were used to repave projects, repave roads. So, for instance, if you had $2, or let's say you pay $24 a year for roads, the equivalent in real life of that is about a, a couple of patches. At the end of the day, that's about a couple of patches, and it's primarily what it was, was there for, is to pay for reconstruction project, the road portion, after we renew water, sewer, and storm in the distribution collection system.
Okay, on the water bill, there's a $2 fee, there's a $4 fee, there's another $4 fee, and there, I believe it's a $33 fee. Why don't it say bonds instead of roads? And this, and that? And why don't it just say bonds?
I, I'm sure we could do something to straighten, make it clear on the water bill. It's a-
Darren, shed some light on that, please.
Just to go back a few years and recap the CIP. Uh, I think Tom might be the only person in the room here, aside from myself, that was here at that time. When the original $40 CIP plan was passed, uh, it was completely passed for water and sewer projects only, no roads, no other, uh, means of financing. It was strictly for water and sewer projects, and it went into the two enterprise funds. As the years went on, and that money's been accounted for with all the water main we've been doing, the water plant, the wastewater treatment plant, numerous other projects, CIP lining, uh, we've done more work in the last five years than we did in the prior 20 years within Freeport. But it was discovered, as we were doing water main, we were only doing certain small sections of streets, and we couldn't do the rest of the street at that time. And so, I believe it was under, uh, Mr. Crowe as the manager, there was a resolution that went in front of council at that time, of the $40, to take four of it to roads, to help fix the roads on those streets that we were doing water main at the same time. And the council, not this council, the previous council, voted to do that, because at that time, they didn't feel like it was just to come back to the taxpayers and ask for another $4. So, consequently, council took that $4 and bonded that money ahead to bring road projects forward. That's what happened. So, we borrowed ahead, we went and got a, basically like a loan, but it's a bond, and we have to pay those off. I don't know the payoff date on that, but that is what the council decided at that time. Not anybody sitting in the staff, it was voted on in this room, and it was voted to move the money to those projects. Now, we're at the point right now with CIP, that we are at a max portcement of the $39 now. Because not only did we take $2 for storm to balance the storm fund, we took $4 for the roads, and we took another dollar out of it for lab employees, because we didn't want to raise rates for more, more employees that we needed at that time. So, that's where our $39 comes from. The first original $8 goes all the way back to the Big Four project that we're still paying off till, I believe, 2032. And so, it's a cyclical problem that we've had to borrow ahead, because we didn't have any bank account to pay for any of these projects. And without the EPA funding and going after those, the $33 million that we've got in forgivable loans would have never happened without that financing. So, the fictitious $13 million that's in that account is just a fictitious number at this point, because it's going to be all spent on the projects that are all underway currently with EPA. So, once we get to the repayment portion of those loans, those funds are all accounted for, all the way through. We planned it out to, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, it won't, the payment won't start for three years, right? So, those monies are accounted for doing our lining programs, taking down trees, things that have to do with CIP, capital improvement projects, that's the acronym, in this town. The Chicago Avenue projects that's happening this year, the downtown project, some of that money came out of. Empire Street, all the improvements that you've seen have been funded through those road sources, either road bonds or capital improvements, right? The Chicago Street project that we're starting next week, from Galena to south, is being funded through those funds as well. That's how we generate income in the utility to pay for these projects. There is no other source. So, there is not a giant bank account that- ... projects. All those projects, to date, have been voted on by council and approved by many councils before you, probably two councils before you. We put together a 10-year plan. We've executed that plan, we've spent more money on infrastructure than we've ever had at a lower cost, and we're at the point right now that we cannot move forward with road projects without some more funding. We literally have about 1.1 to $1 million a year in MFT funds. That's gonna be 800,000 this year, because we're losing ground with the EV, hybrid vehicles. And that will be all the money the city has in a pot for road funds. This year alone, we're probably close to $6 million in roads alone, not counting Adams Avenue, that is costing the city out of a, a reserve pot that we've collected, $10 million for that project alone. So, the investment has been there, but all we're telling you guys is, unless we do a creative tax, like Rockford and Lena and some of these other communities have for a sales tax, we don't have any other road funding, other than going back to property tax, which affects only Freeport residents, and not everybody that lives in the county that comes through and shops here. That's why we feel like it's the most fair tax. That's why Rockford's doing it, that's why Lena's doing it. And, and that's just the pure facts. And, and I'll answer any other questions you want, but that's how we got to today.
Manager Boyer.
Darren, would you also share with us what the Illinois Secretary of Transportation said a couple of weeks ago when he came to Freeport?
Yeah, the, uh, um, uh, Mr. Cabello, Representative Cabello, had a meet and greet for, um, Ozmar, uh, he's the Secretary of Transportation, and I directly asked him this question in front of the entire county that was there, what he would suggest that the city of Freeport does about roads, with the little amount of funding that we get, and how many streets are IDOT eligible, and how many we have that are not, which is the majority. And he said he would 100% support a sales tax for roads, and the only communities that can get back on the road program and keep up their roads are the towns that are doing this. That was a direct quote from him. It was just a question that we asked to see. Um, there was lots of representatives and a lot of other community people that were there to listen to that. So, that's not our opinion, but we're looking for other ideas. They're just, we're at a stalwart with, not only us, but, uh, I don't want to pull Chairman Helms in, but he's in the same boat. There is not, uh, money for road funding out there that's just available to go get to fix roads. So, it has to be addressed locally.
Manager Boyer.
Could you kind of recapture that conversation with, uh, the District Two engineer regarding? Are we just focusing on, um, on just city streets, or are we actually taking this to IDOT to also get them to fix their main thoroughfare street town?
So, um, and we started this while Randy was here, but Rob's really pushed it forward. Um, we are not looking at the Freeport road program as just our local roads. We are also, and if, if you've been around town, you'll see, we are really pushing our partners in IDOT to help support us with the IDOT rightaways, which our main corridors are South Street, West Street, and Galena Avenue are all IDOT thoroughways. Um, we need to get and have provided funding from them. Uh, just this year, you'll see, if you drive around, we put, uh, a, a lot of, uh, happy power with them to get painting done, and striping, and some grinding to smooth those roads out that hadn't been done for years and years. We've had, uh, two quarterly meetings with them already, and we continue to have meetings with them quarterly to try to make Freeport a focus point. We are the third largest municipality in their district. So, we're looking at the road program as an inclusive program that can attack from all ends. Our corridors have to be nice, right? So, we have to get IDOT funding to help with those solutions. Um, we can't afford those roads on our own, nor should we, because they're not ours to, to look at. We're also looking at jurisdictional transfers for some of the corridors, like South Street's an unmarked route. IDOT will never spend another dollar on that street unless we take it over as a community. But what we're asking for them in turn is to give us the money to rehab it now, and rehab it in the future, that we can bank, um, and, and take that over and fix it all the way from the tie-in at Route 20, all the way to South Street. That's something that we'll never have the money for to do without, without their support. Um, so, we are looking at inclusive. We're also trying to build off the road projects that we've already started, like the Empire project that we've done. A lot of you guys see, uh, patches going on, on the east side of Empire. We're trying to fix that. We're trying to tie Chicago Avenue all the way through the corridor as one of the main hubs. We're doing what we can with the dollars we've, we've had provided to us, and we've spent all of them, in my opinion, very well, um, and, and very detailed at what we've gotten done, and we're trying to fix things right now that is not a Band-Aid. We want to fix the street, we want to have it last for 20 to 25 years, which is the design life, and not come back. That's the goal.
Manager Boyer.
Through all these efforts, uh, what, what type of funding changes have we seen to IDOT corridors since we've been visiting with, uh, with Masood?
We've actually got some open opportunities with them that we didn't have before, and it, it looks to us like with some support from the city of Freeport, that we will get the complete funding to do Galena Avenue from Clark to Park. That's become a priority project for them, and then in the, what they call the multi-use plan, within five years. We've also asked for more assistance at South Street, because of the ADA issues that exist in that area, and a lot of shopping demand that doesn't have a corridor for people to get through. Um, so, we have got quite a bit of attention so far, and we've asked them to move West Street up into the multi-year plan. West Street was supposed to turn into a three, three-lane to five-lane street 20 years ago, and it just got kind of pushed by the wayside. But now, with the ability for us to have more contact with them, we feel like, you know, squeaky wheel will give you more grease. Very pleased at the progress we've made in, in very short order, but we couldn't have gotten the things done we have done so far without the road bond money, um, without some, we had some built-up MFT from a few years of really not having a city engineer to move things forward. And so, consequently, we're to the point that, um, after we get everything cleaned up for this year, we'll be, we'll be very bare-boned, um, waiting for next year's motor fuel tax.
Alderman Parker.
The way I look at this is, um, I don't want the sales tax anymore than anybody else. But we all, in our own personal lives, have had disasters happen in our family, where you had to fix, you didn't have the money to correct whatever the disaster was, and I'm personally going through it right now. But you have to find a way to fix it. So, and that's unfortunate. Our roads are a disaster, and that's what we found this way to fix it. It happens in our own personal lives, and that's the way I'm looking at this.
Yeah. One of the things that, when we were dealing with the Secretary of Transportation, that he informed us, is the best way to moderate this sales tax is to have it tight on the ordinance and on what it can be spent on. And if you do that, then it will be spent at roads, and it would have to come back to the council to override that to go to something else. And so, um, a- and I can tell you that everybody that's involved in this, from the end of wanting to get work done, want to see you make it restrictive to roads, so we can get more road work done. That's the plan. That's what we want to do. We want to take that money and put it to action as quickly as possible and fix as many streets as we can. That's the goal here. And also retain our good employees, which has, has been a problem, as we've discussed at other meetings, and I don't want to get back to, but, uh, frankly, they're way underpaid for the work we're asking them to do.
Alderman Sellers.
Yes, I want to say that, um, me too, I am not wanting to pay the, the tax, especially with, um, the, um, coming up with the, uh, $20 added to our water bill. And I know this weekend, my phone blew up from Friday till yesterday. I finally just said, "No more." But, um, I don't want to do it either. I do know that we need money to, to get started on what we have to do. But my main thing is, I want to make sure the highest percentage of the money goes to our workers, to build our own street department, to build them, to, to, and give them the proper training, that we don't have to go out to all these other different, um-
Contract.
-organizations to get them to come in to help us, because then we have to pay even more. Built our own, um, uh, city workers. But right now, and I know I'm not ready to, um, say yes or no, because I need more information. I need to see, I need to see my, my numbers, I need to see the percentages, I need to see what that is, and that's what I don't see. I don't want it to be, we get, we say yes, and then we find out only 10% is going to our workers and everything else is going out. No. I need to see numbers, I need to see an outline, I need to see, um, those kind of things for me. And, um, I do hurt for the people that are on fixed incomes, and that have to, um, struggle with not being able to eat out and buy and do whatever, because I know I, and I've said it before, I go to Rockford a lot. So, I do shop, I do get, I do do that, because that's where I go a lot. But I do know that we need it for, for these, um, you're saying all these people are coming into Freeport? I like to just see numbers of how you got the 3.2 million, because last night on the news, it said 5 million. So, I'm like, hey, that's a whole another million in what? Eight, that I need to find out. So, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out. I need my numbers to come together, and they're not coming together.
So, the, whatever information people put out on the news, uh, is inaccurate. The real numbers are here at the council. Michelle and Randy ran them before Randy left, and we believe that the correct number, barring some- And we believe that the correct number, barring some ups and downs within the markets and spending goes on, is about 3.5 million annually that we would be able to count on in revenue. That might be 3.2 one year and it might be 3.7 the next, but 3.5, we believe, would be the average of a 1% sales tax in town. Um, I would remind you guys too, a, a handful of years ago, City of Freeport put a fast food tax on, as I recall, and everybody thought it was going to kill McDonald's and Culvers and all these other places. And to my knowledge, every time I drive by them, the drive-throughs are completely full at, uh, 8.25%. And I don't think anybody thinks about that, buying a soft drink or whatever, a hamburger. They're paying that without question and people could make their food at home a lot cheaper than they, than they can eat out. But that doesn't seem to stop the lines at the fast food joints. And so, yes, it's a priority for everybody. We have not, as the city of Freeport prioritized their road system. So again, like I had said before, if we don't make it a priority, then we can't complain about the condition because we're telling you upfront, we can't fix them without the funding.
Yeah.
Alderman Sellers, I have a question for you. You, um, you know, we, we have a first and a second to move this on to the next regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting.
Oh, okay. I thought it was.
It, it, there is, um, to go to second reading. However, we do have a committee of the whole next week. Um, if you have specific questions that you think maybe you might want to, uh, discuss so that way you have a better understanding of whatever that might be, maybe if you want to make a motion, I, I don't know if you want to or not, that we also put this on the cowl. That's, um, you know, there, there's an option there to be able to have more discussion.
Yes, I would like to do that. Me personally.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Monroe to, um, also add this to the next committee of the whole agenda. Just for discussion, uh, do we need to have, um, if it's okay, just that piece of it? Can we have a, um, um, call on, on just that?
So move. So move.
Uh, that was Sellers and Monroe.
Correct.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
And Simmons?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Uh, Alderman Stacy.
Yes, I just want to say because this Adam Street thing keeps coming up. This Adam Street project is what, five years old?
Um, yeah, probably four to five.
Okay, wasn't money allotted for this project?
No ma'am. There was money being saved towards this project, but, uh, EPA loans where we were going after to fix water and sewer only. We were not going to fix the whole streetway because the city didn't have the money.
So this was not a grant?
No, this is a completely local funded project through EPA, uh, water and sewer, uh, loans that we're taking out and then city local funds that have been saved to redo storm and in about six feet of the street. The, the loans are paying for the rest of the street.
So do we have the money for this project or not to complete it?
Yes ma'am, we do.
Okay, um, Mr. Boyer. Last, I knew you were the city manager. So I just need a little help understanding, why are you asking Darren questions that you either already or should have the answer to? We need to hear from you. You're our city manager.
Agreed. Uh, Darren is the subject matter expert on the history of the roads in Freeport. I've been here for three years. He's got a lot more background history on what has historically been done and, uh, I like to have the best person in, at running point when it comes to, um, dealing with the job.
Absolutely.
Okay, but the questions you were asking him, I think you already had the answer. Did you go meet with this gentleman that he talked about? Were you there when he met with this gentleman that said what we needed to do?
Uh, Alderman Stacy, originally the city engaged IDOT. We started out with a meeting at IDOT. We followed up with them coming here to our community. And the third step was inviting the Secretary of Transportation here to Freeport. So yes, we were, I was there, Darren was there, the mayor was there. Um, and one of our congressmen invited other communities to attend, but originally this was supposed to be a one-on-one visit with the Secretary of Transportation and Masood from District Two.
Okay, I'm just saying, the questions you were asking him are the questions you had him answering? Would have been nice to have been heard from you. You had the answers.
Okay, point taken.
Alderman Sellers? You know what? Uh, I'm sorry. I, I misspoke on that. Alderman Sanders.
Okay. Okay, let me, let's, um, let's reverse here for a few, few minutes. Um, because I need to get clarity on how we even got, like I asked earlier, how did we get to this point? And who initiated the thought process of doing such a thing as a sales tax? Brother Sh- Shadle indicated that it was his thought process that implemented this, this whole notion. And my question is, was there a, was it on an agenda? Was a motion been made to bring this subject matter up? We're talking about a subject that may not have been put on the agenda. And if it had not been put on the agenda, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about it. But here we are talking about it and there has not been a motion, a vote, or anything to, for open discussion. And this is what, this is what, this is what has me angered is because something went before us and it had not even met the agenda. So how could we, how could we implement something in the agenda that's not there? Or discuss it? So the thing about it is.
Uh, I think the clerk has some, she wants to.
The minutes that were approved tonight for August 21st, Alderson Monroe moved and Alderson Parker seconded to move this ordinance in reference to ordinance 2023-40 imposing a revised sales tax from 1.25 to 2.25. Alderson Monroe moved and Alderson Parker seconded to move this ordinance forward with an amendment to limit expenditures related to road construction for first meeting at September 5 city council meeting. The motion carried by roll call vote, ayes, Clem, Monroe, Simmons, Parker, Shadle, Sanders, and Sellers, no nays. Um, prior to that, it was on the August cowl. So you were a part of that rule?
Yeah, well, I resent all of that mentioned. Yeah, I reject all of that. I propose, I reject myself for, for being that naive and we didn't have a discussion about it. That's, that's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm at fault for, for not even suggesting let's have a discussion about every aspect of the sales tax rule and anything else that is moving money without the discussion of the, of the council. The council don't move on, on projects unless we have discussed it. I, I mentioned that before. But so, but some of us are ignoring that process, getting around it, having sidebars and things of that nature going on. And it shouldn't have never been, uh, talked about until the, uh, council got together and, uh, and talked about it. We have not done that. So if we have not done that, then there's, uh, well, this, this, this particular part of the ordinance shouldn't even be talked about. We shouldn't even be having this conversation. But yet here we are. And we cannot have, we, we have, we have, um, my brother, I forgot his name.
Okay, is there, is there any council members that have not had a chance to speak yet? Alderman Monroe, did you speak yet? I, I don't recall.
I have not, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to call on you next.
I just have one quick question. I just wanted something from Darren. Um, you said this was, I remember it being, um, you said a four-year project, the Adam Street. I just want to get some clarification.
It was like four to five years from original concept to design. Because we first pursued state money to try to do the project. They expanded the project to want to do, um, right away to right away, which would have made the project cost $20 million instead of the 10 that it actually costs. So the city, we, we took this project over, um, uh, with the city to kind of reduce the scope, not having to go right away to right away for all those additional costs. So the true cost of what we have now will be all new utilities, a new roadway and new sidewalks. And, and that was the limited factor to it. When you involve state money for any project, um, their requirements really make you spend a lot more money. So they, they do give you money, but they were only going to give us $2 million towards that project, but make it cost 20. So it made it unaffordable to be able to redo the section. Um, and remember, so the bulk of the project here, $6 million of the project is water infrastructure. 2 million, 2.4 million is sewer infrastructure. Those are both loaned items that we're taking 20-year loans on to pay off. And then the balance of the project is being paid for by the city wholly out of Storm and General Street Funds. That, that was the plan, uh, when we came into this year before we bid it. So we budget projects out within the water, sewer, streets, utilities budget. We budget projects every year in the budgets that we're working on now. And that's how we budget and bring the project forward to bid so we know how we're going to pay for them. So all these projects that we're working on right now have been approved by council and the spending has been approved in the budgets. And that's, if, if doesn't, when we bring you the, the resolution, then it would say that it's unbudgeted and we have to move money around to do it. So all the, you're going to see Brad Maron Town on tonight is a budgeted item.
Manager Boyer.
Oh, just one real quick. I just want, I do know that, um, when Kirsten was here and they were doing this Adam Street branch, I mean, um, Adam Street, at, at that time, it was, they were going for a grant. And she had told me that they didn't get it.
We typically go for lots of grants on these different projects because there's lots of different avenues. It's just not really for the streets. It's for water and sewer. So we tried to get a, at that time, it was a DCO, uh, um, underserved area grant for a half a million dollars towards the water main, but we did not receive it for that area.
Okay, so you didn't get the grant?
No.
Manager Boyer.
But instead, we got the EPA loan and we got 1.25 million dollars worth of forgiveness out of that loan instead, which was double what DCO was going to give anyway.
Go ahead, man.
Uh, staff's request is council, uh, move this for second reading at the next council meeting.
What?
Uh, staff is just requesting that we move this ordinance to the second meeting, uh, in, uh, September for, uh, second reading.
Yeah, we have a motion on that.
No, that's not where we are.
Um, so Alderman, uh, Monroe?
It moved to the cowl.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's moved to the cowl for additional discussion.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, that's not what we said.
I have a motion by Parker and Shadle to approve the ordinance. We started that prior to discussion.
Uh, so Alderman Monroe.
So, you know, I'm torn. Um, and I'm torn for a lot of reasons. Uh, first of all, and my fellow council members, this text that was sent out about this conversation, a lot of this is just bunk. It's all false, right? We all know that. It's meant to divide us, uh, the people of the city. It's meant to divide. Um, but, you know, more, more so, the 3.5 million, uh, annual tax increase is on all of us, even us, sitting here at these tables this evening. It affects us. We, we come from, to and from this community all the time. We drive around this community. We spend all of our money in this community for the most part. Um, we've gotten a lot of public input and I've been surprised, it's been about 60, 40 in my neck of the woods, 60% for, 40% against. Um, where I, where I sit right now, and I know we've had quite a bit of conversations about this, um, there's not been any sidebars that I'm fami- that I'm familiar with. Um, but I, I have doubts, uh, in, in current staff and leadership that we would use this money appropriately. And that, that's what's drawing me to the point I'm at right now, that I'm undecided where I want to go with this. Um, you know, it is a big tax. It is a big hit on our community, our growth that we're trying to do. I can't get answers on how we're going to clean the city up. I don't have a roadmap for that. And I'm getting, already earlier this evening, as the chair of the finance committee, I'm, overall total of what we saw tonight was almost a 26 and a quarter percent increase over last year. And I don't see the funds being used and utilized appropriately. And I'm concerned by that very much. Um, we had a conversation last year, um, about the Greater Freeport Partnership. I mean, that's almost half a million dollars a year.
For what?
Exactly. So, you know, we've got to tighten our belt loops before we start asking for increases in taxes, increases in pay, um, more personnel and that type of thing. Because I need to see the roadmap. And I think that's what is the concern across the council right now, is we're not seeing the vision marching toward 2040 that we talked about two years ago with the previous council. Um, and I think we need to get there and get there quick because I understand the importance of moving rapidly and getting to this being approved by October 1st, if it's going to happen, because it's got to be implemented and then go into place April 1st of next year. Um, but, you know, I think, I think us as a group have got to come together. Um, the stone tossing, back and forth, whoever's sending this stuff, it doesn't do us any good. Um, we've got to work together and figure this out. It is not easy. We've been tasked with a monumental effort to try and fix roads. Um, and I think the three of us have talked a little bit about the cost it would take to even do the water and sewer and the roads and, and we're north of, it, it's got to be north of a quarter billion dollars to fix it. Wow. And am I, am I off? Am I pretty close? So, you know, that, those are scary numbers, especially with the amount of jobs that have left the community, the amount of things that we've got to look at. But we've got to look at every expenditure in this town, in the city, uh, in the township, in the county, everywhere else, we've got to work together better and really figure this out because it is, it is a complex issue. And if we want to save what we all have grown up in, that we've graduated schools around here, maybe not all of us at Freeport High, but we've all graduated in this county. We've all grown up here for the most part. And, you know, our kids are growing up here, our families are growing up here. So we've got to figure that out. And I think with these, with the taxes, my biggest concern, and then I start hearing, and this is the first I've heard, um, that we would be paying for personnel on these, on these. Is that personnel associated with outside contractors or city personnel?
Hmm, interesting.
Manager Boyer.
Uh, yes, it would go toward contracted work and it would also go toward our indigenous crews. So depending upon the size of the scope of the project and skills required, it could be contract, some of it could be contracted out while we'll continue to, uh, you know, pay our people good wages.
Follow up.
And I think that says it in this, doesn't it? Doesn't it spell it out that way?
Yeah, can I? I, I just want to follow up on that real quick.
Sure.
And then I'm happy to, to turn over the floor. So we're already paying for our indigenous crews with the budget we're putting forward. So my question is, why are we moving funds? That's where we're moving, this is where we get ourselves in trouble. Because we're moving funds from one place to another and then we can do whatever we want with this money over here. That's not how this works.
Yeah.
And I think when we pay for it once, it's paid for. And I think that's what, that's where we've got to get. Those are the types of details that we need.
I think that's the increase that, that's been talked about. Am I, am I correct on that? When we talk, it's the increase.
Uh, what we talked about tonight during the budget was adding a position for community development
Mm-hmm.
and, uh, doing something with communication, adding, adding something for communication.
For what? I mean, I guess I missed that one. I don't know.
But we can talk about that after.
Okay.
But, um, because we've got some more discussions.
Okay.
But coming back to that, so, you know, you're going to give a presentation in a week or two weeks or a month, whenever that is, um, that's going to ask for a certain budget for the street and water department.
Right.
So we're already paying for that. That's my point.
Yeah.
So.
But you don't have the floor.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, back to you, Mayor.
Um, Manager Boyer.
If I could respond to that, so, um, specifically on the street program, uh, what we have in the budget currently in general fund is insufficient for a regular road reconstruction, um, scope of projects, right, for five years. What we have in the budget currently is maintenance money and some additional things on the road projects, okay? So whether that's backfill and whatnot for patching and, uh, water main or, uh, filling trenches and stuff for water main. What we're asking for, if there's some confusion, let me be clear, what we're asking for is a dedicated revenue source that will allow us funding so that we could. so that we could create a scope of work for a five-year plan that would provide the funding required to complete those projects. Currently, our, our projects that we have in the five-year plan were funded by road bond funds. Those funds are coming to an end, and we are looking for a funding source that's gonna allow us to continue to, to pursue those road projects and continue to finish them.
Alderman Stacy?
Yes, I have a question, and it's gonna be a little bit off the subject. But I want to know, at what percentage are we paying? At what percentage are we paying our, not the retirement, but the? Pension? At what percent are we paying pension at this time?
Can I defer to Michelle on that one?
Director Richter.
Thank you, pension.
Um, pensions vary. There's three different ones. There's police, fire, and then there's IMRF, which covers utility workers and the street department, also library. The rates, the way they're calculated is different. IMRF is a set rate. It fluctuates every year of what the municipal's percentage that we contribute, and that is dictated by IMRF. We have no choice in what we have to pay. This year, we're only at, we're very lucky, it's been pretty low. It's only at like 1.5% of wages. I'm rounding there, because I don't have the exact number in my head. When I first started, eight years ago, we were more in the 4% to 5% area. So IMRF is a specific percentage. Police and fire pensions are contributions based on an actuary. So they are not given to us as a percentage of wage. That's not how it works. Once the actuary comes, comes in as an auditor, we hire an actuary, and they come in, look at all of our salary numbers, and they, through projections and different demographics, how long people are expected to live, you know, the, all those different factors, they determine how much we need to contribute that year. So for example, I can tell you the amounts that we have in the budget to pay this year are, there's set amounts determined by the actuaries. So the, one second. The police pension is? I think the police pension is? About 361 that we're paying this year, and fire is a little more. Fire is 692,000. And we are required to pay those annual amounts because we took out pension obligation bonds a couple of years ago. That's part of the bond agreement, is that we keep up on our annual contributions. So we are almost, we're 100% funded in one after the economic downturn from last year, and the other, don't ask me.
But can you tell me at what percent are we at?
Yeah, I don't have a percent. I mean, what, what do you mean? We, we don't contribute to police and fire pension as a percent.
I thought by 2045, we were supposed to be at 90%.
We're over that in both funds right now.
Just because Alderman Simmons has been very quiet on there, I just wanna make sure that there wasn't something you wanted to ask Alderman Simmons?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. And Darren?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a question James asked. So the plan, i-if this were to pass, was to probably spend half of the money with the city crews contract, uh, doing local work, non-contracted, and the other half contracting workouts still. The sheer volume of that work would be too much for our guys to handle. And I think, just as a reminder, we talked about there's certain streets in town, due to the wits, that we don't have the ability to do, because our equipment, you know, we don't have top of the line. We don't have the ability to do, you know, a 66-foot street all at once, so that's something that we need to hire out. So my analogy was, our main thoroughways are heavy, heavy-traveled streets. We would still probably contract those out and concentrate on our secondary streets with our crews.
Okay, so let's, let's just remember what, we're on item number six. We've got two motions that we've taken care of tonight with moving this as discussion for next week, and then second reading on the following week. So there's still two more opportunities to be able to discuss. So just wanna make sure that everyone realizes we're on item number six. We also have executive session tonight, so are aware of your time and.
Did I hear you right, Mayor? There's an executive session?
Yes, there is. We, we have executive session tonight.
It's on here?
It, it's not on this topic. We just have executive session.
And what's the topic on that?
Well, that's what's discussed in executive, so.
Question?
Yes.
Are we still in discussion?
We, we are in discussion for item number six. I was just reminding you of the time, and we have two more discussion timeframes yet, so.
Item number six? Yeah, that's still the same item, yeah. I did wanna say something.
Alderman Sanders, go ahead.
Young gentleman. Okay. I, I heard a lot of potentials and estimations, and I've been listening to the alternative. Because of my age and of getting old, I wanna go back to where you may mention heavy roads that needs to be implemented into these projects. Why aren't we concentrating and focusing on the residential level? Because that is where the, the bulk of the problem is.
We will be with.
But I don't want you talking about highways.
No, no, we're not talking about highways. We're talking about contracted-led streets, our Empire Street, which is one of our most heaviest-traveled streets in Freeport. That's a street that we don't have the ability with our crews to do full-width paving there, because the right-of-way or the property areas between the curbs is too wide.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the designated areas of residences who, uh, complains the majority of the time.
Those are the, those are the streets that our crews can handle doing, all residential.
What I like to hear, I don't know how you guys choose what street for priorities, but I, I don't think we're focused enough on what the residents need. They're the ones who's, uh, controls everything. They're the ones that have the power. The council, we represent them, and this is the language that they're speaking. We're on the topic of road condition, but the point that I'm making is, I think our focus is not on the right track. That's my point.
Well, at the prior couple of meetings, Mr. Sanders, we talked about laying out a plan when we know what funding we have, and then that plan would come to the council for approval on streets that we select in an order, other, until we know, you know, what kind of dollars we're dealing with, because every street in town costs something different. If I, for example, Center Street has concrete and brick under it that we're doing right now. That street rehab's gonna cost a lot more than what I just.
I've heard those scenarios already. I heard all of about those scenarios. But my point, my point of reference is, is this. The streets that we're focusing on, taxpayers don't realize why it is, or why it is we select nature, and what's under the road or whatever. That's not what they're concerned about. What they're concerned about is, we as a city, a, a city council is making proposal to a, to accommodate the folks. We, we shouldn't be going year after year telling folks that we haven't met the cost to put new roads in. They shouldn't be hearing that every year. We need to be applying something to demonstrate that we are focused on the residents of this, of this city. And they, they don't, they don't know these things until they actually see your neighborhoods putting roads and things like that back together. They figure we're just up here, up here, just shucking and jiving the residents about where we're gonna be putting roads. If we start doing a project on South Street, putting roads in, and whatever I-DOT allows us to do, people are gonna be grumbling, they're gonna be murmuring about all of that. They're gonna be complaining, because they're saying, well, why, why are you guys over here when you should be looking at these roads in the immediate neighborhoods? Because here's what's going on. Peoples' idle arms and idle links and whatever, tire rods and all these kinds of things are being destroyed. That's another, that's another financial cost to people. We know that happens, you know that happens, but yet, we're not trying to accommodate the residents of the ones who's been complaining for years. These, these road conditions been going on for years, and we haven't, we don't put much money into it, you know? And so that's what, that's what I'm getting at, is because we.
We couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Sanders. That's, that's why we're here.
Okay, so, uh, Manager Boyer, did you wanna interject something?
I just wanted to make one point. And I, in the last five years, I think more roadwork's been done in this town than the last 20 years. We're making a dent, but we need your support. We need your support to get this done. And if we, if we're talking about what happened 20 years ago all day long, we're never gonna get this done.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that, Brother Boyer. But the point, the point that I'm making is, it seem like we're doing things at a stalemate, or we're procrastinating, or we're just not getting the job done. This is what we're not doing. And I don't see no evidence. I see evidence, I see that Adam is now being, you know, resurfaced, or dug up, or whatever the case is. I see something happening there, and that is major for the people of this town, to see something actually, seeing their taxes.
Darren, do you think at the next, for the next council, how many? You can put a list together for him?
Yeah, yeah.
I want him to be able to see all the work that has been done.
Okay. And, uh, but the thing is, I want to be able to say to my constituents that we're moving forward. I can't say that right now, because there's no evidence of it. We're still bickering about the dollars and cents, you know, complaining about, and now we wanna impose more taxes upon the people.
Manager Boyer, you got something else?
You know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that the Third, Fifth, and Seventh Ward have the highest number of lead service lines anywhere else in the city. We can't repave the road until we get the lead service lines done, and we have to make sure the utilities are good before we do the road. Third, Fifth, and Seventh Ward also has the most issue with curb, gutter, requirements for ADA ramps, driveway approaches. It requires the most investment of anywhere else in the city. And I know you haven't had a chance to see it yet, but it takes years to get this stuff moving, and we are moving in that direction, and I just wanna allay your fears that this is moving in the right direction. Chicago, or Adams is a, a good example. But we've gotta figure out this funding, and so that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is we need some reoccurring source of funding that's gonna allow us to know what we have, what we can do it a year. And to be honest, what you, 3.5 million is something, it is significant. But that gets you roughly five to seven miles a year. It doesn't get you to your full goal, which to me is eight miles a year in a 20-year plan.
Okay.
But we'll do, we're doing what we can, is my point.
Here's the, uh, as a whole, as a collective body, we have not had one discussion privately discussing finances, the roads sourced, the road and the sources of how we're gonna pay for it. As, as, as members, we have not had that yet, where we get, where we can get into a room and talk about how are we gonna get things done? Who's got some insight and directions on how we could get things done? We just can't do this at, at a cow every, every week. The meetings of the minds, you know, going to some like what we call a think tank, brainw, brainstorming, all of these kinds of adjectives, we're not getting this done like that. And we can't do it here in this chamber, because things can get a little personal, and we, we do not need to be displaying what the council is about. And, and that's, I, I don't wanna see us not in agreement, but we know that things can't be always in agreement, because we have not come up to that level to understand what these projects are doing.